We already did, we'll do the pledge allegiance again. I think there's more people here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very exciting to me. Your parents, Naka, just seems like timing is just a struggle right now.
Say huh? Who's that?
Excuse me, Eddie.
Okay, okay, Mr. Dinkert.
Mayor Steen.
Present.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Present.
Councilmember Waller.
Present.
King.
Present.
Hushusta.
Present.
Fisher.
Present.
Baskin.
Present.
Helly.
Present.
We have a quorum, Your Honor.
Thank you, everyone. There's a motion for adoption of the agenda. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number two is a motion approving the minutes from May eighteenth, uh, two thousand twenty. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. We have no recognitions or awards tonight. Number four is a motion for the consent agenda. We need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under petitions and requests, number five is a resolution approving a permanent patio liquor service area for the old mill. Ms. Casel.
Yes, this is, um, the old mill they're wanting to permanently expand, so that's why we couldn't do this one administratively. So this would be a permanent expansion of their patio into their backyard. Um, we've reviewed it. They have the fencing requirements and all the insurances, so, um, obviously, they're going to be going out there now during the pandemic, but theirs would continue versus the ones we approve administratively would not after they're allowed to go back to one hundred percent seating.
Thank you. Me and Sarah grew by the other day, and they have a really nice setup in back there, so. Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for number five.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seven is a resolution, uh, six is a resolution setting a polling location for the two thousand twenty elections. Ms. Casel.
We talked about this at the last work session, and, uh, since the legislature removed us from all the schools, we're gonna try to go to one large polling location for the two thousand twenty elections, so that would be the Holiday Inn. Um, we're also working with the county because we expect a large absentee turnout. Um, and the county actually is probably going to move into City Hall for that since we have the old engineering side, so we're gonna partner with them to process the absentee ballots, um, and use some of our staff to do that too, since it's gonna be such a large turnout for that.
This will be for the primary and the election?
Yes, so what we, um, when you do for one, you have to do for the other.
Okay, so we're gonna have one location, that's it, for voting?
We're gonna have a big ol' location, yep.
For the whole county?
No, 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 just for the city.
Just for the city.
This is just for the city of Austin, yes.
Okay, so the county will still maintain their locations out in the county?
Some of them have consolidated also to one place. Um, obviously, the townships are smaller anyways, they only have one place, but a lot of the smaller townships that didn't mail ballot before went to mail balloting specifically just for this election.
Okay, thank you. Uh, council, any questions?
And the idea on the going to the central location, is that primarily driven by the lack of election judges or the pressure that's on that? Or just that there's not other available spaces that we could do? I mean, I think it's the right way to go, just if we get asked the why.
Both. It would be both, because we're anticipating, you know, a big decrease to our election judges, so, um, we wanna be able to have, you know, the ones we have in one space instead of, you know, needing six different precincts to man the ballot box, we could do it with one there. Um, but yes, the spaces, the spaces are always an issue to find. Um, and we can't go in any type of nursing home, obviously, this year either, so the legislature kinda restricted anywhere we could go, and we don't have a lot of other places to go. So we think this is the best option that we can do.
Any other questions, comments? If not, we need a resolution for six.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Seven is a resolution approving an independent fee estimate for work at the Austin Municipal Airport. Mr. Lang.
We received a, we received a proposal from TKDA in the amount of three thousand dollars for an independent fee estimate, which will, which means that they will provide, um, an estimated cost based on a scope of work that is developed for an airport layout plan update and Exhibit A. This, uh, independent fee estimate will be used to compare with the proposal that we received from SEH as kind of a checks and balances to make sure that, um, the costs incurred and the engineering services are in line with what we receive. So we would recommend approval of this independent fee estimate with TKDA in the amount of three thousand dollars, which will be uh, eligible one hundred percent for reimbursement through a future FAA grant.
Any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for number eight.
Seven.
Seven, seven.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Number eight is a resolution approving a proposal with SEH for engineering services for a fence relocation at the Austin Municipal Airport. Stephen?
As part of the armory easement project, we need to relocate an existing fence, and in order to do that, to meet all the federal guidelines to make this eligible for federal reimbursement, we are working with SEH to develop plans and specifications for that fence relocation, along with, uh, construction observation, making sure everything's completed paperwork-wise, uh, and everything that is involved with an FAA grant, along with the project management. For that work, SEH has provided us a proposal in the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars to complete these engineering services, and again, they will be, uh, one hundred percent eligible for reimbursement with a future FAA grant.
Council, any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution for number eight.
So moved the resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Nine is a resolution approving a labor agreement with Minnesota Public Employees Association and associated memorandums of understanding. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Members, our police supervisors bargaining group, Menpia, has approved a contract extension for two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-two. Uh, this is inconsistent with our BPS based pay plan and also includes a memorandum of understanding to be approved as well this evening. Uh, summary of the provisions of the contract are listed in your packet. Um, the motion is listed there as well, uh, that we need for council to approve the agreement with Menpia.
Council, any questions or comments on nine? If not, we need a resolution.
So moved the resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Ten is a resolution granting a cable TV franchise extension to Spectrum Mid-America LLC through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty. Mr. Clark?
Mayor members, this one you've seen before, our extension, six-month extensions, uh, with Spectrum or Charter. Uh, we need to renew that again to extend it. Um, probably the only thing that's changed is the interest, uh, possibly of MetroNet entering the community. Um, that's still to be worked out. We did do the annexation area recently with MetroNet and hopeful that they'll be interested in expanding citywide. Uh, but at this point, uh, all we're considering is the charter resolution extension through December thirty-first of two thousand twenty.
Questions or comments? If there are none, we need a resolution for number ten.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Eleven is a resolution accepting donations to the city of Austin. Self-explanatory, need a resolution.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Twelve is a series of motions granting the planning and zoning department to power the contract for removal of junk and/or illegally stored vehicles at the following locations. A, six oh five Tenth Drive Southeast, the Gießmann property, need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. B, five oh three Eighth Avenue Southeast, the Wakefield property, need a motion.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King. Councilmember King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
C, seven oh five Fourteenth Avenue Southwest, the Heeman Housing Property, need a motion.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
D, seven oh four Twenty-seventh Avenue Northeast, the Cornixwell Property, need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. And finally, E, ten seventeen Tenth Avenue Southwest, the Ernst Property, need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. Under awarding bids, thirteen is two resolution receiving bids for sanitary sewer spot repairs and concrete pavement repairs. Mr. Lang?
In two thousand eighteen, we started our INI program in the southeast quadrant, and through that process of inspecting manholes, inspecting all of our sanitary sewer lines, we have now put together, uh, uh, projects in upcoming years to repair items that were identified in, or deficiencies in that sewer system. So this is our first year of budgeting for some of those repairs, and we've, uh, put a budget together of a hundred thousand dollars for these initial, or kind of our worst sanitary sewer repairs that were identified. We've taken bids, uh, to repair the sanitary sewer and then also in areas where there is concrete pavement, uh, to replace the concrete pavement, so that's why there's two separate resolutions for you tonight. We bid the projects looking at, uh, kind of the eleven worst areas, and based on the bids, we'll be able to do eight of those spot repairs and fit it within the hundred thousand dollar budget. So we would recommend tonight, uh, with one resolution to award the bid to Hanson Hauling and Excavating, and with the second resolution, we'd recommend awarding the concrete work to Jim Cummings Concrete. And again, we will work with the contractors and adjust the, uh, the items to bring it within budget.
Council, any questions or comments? If not, we need a resolution awarding bid for sanitary sewer spot repairs. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin. Councilmember Baskin. I saw your lips move.
Aye, sorry.
Councilmember Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
And B, we need another resolution awarding bid for concrete pavement repairs.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Dinkert.
Councilmember Waller.
Aye.
King.
Aye.
Hushusta.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Baskin.
Aye.
Helly.
Aye.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Aye.
Resolution passes seven zero, Your Honor.
Thank you. We're now to city, are there any citizens that, uh, want to address the council on anything? Any issue? Anything at all? John, you must came here for something. I come up here and tell us what a good job we're doing?
I just enjoy these meetings.
You're doing a good job. Okay, uh, there, our, it looks like Obalo Bal is not present tonight. We are, uh, reports and recommendations. Let's, Tom, we're in the voting order, I guess, yes.
I think Elaine raised her hand.
Some people are raising their hands.
Well, we're gonna go in the regular order on here. Oh, Elaine, I'm sorry, did you want to say something?
Hi, um, yes, I just want to say thank you very much to the council for taking such great action with the outdoor dining. Many businesses are excited about the opportunity that this looks forward to help those, um, those restaurants regain some revenue. Um, it won't make them whole, but it certainly goes a long way towards that, so thank you very much for listening to that request and responding in such a favorable manner.
Well, thank you, Elaine. Hopefully, we can get back to normal as soon as possible. Anybody else? I see other people out here. Anybody else would like to address the council?
Bottom left. Brian Beasley.
Bottom left. Who's on the bottom left? Brian?
Yes, is this, uh, open comment?
Yes, it is.
Items we have?
Yes, but you have to identify yourself and tell us where you live.
That, so, my name is Brian Beasley. I'm with Austin Public Schools, Director of Facilities.
Okay.
Your item is gonna be on the next meeting in just a moment, unless you had another comment.
Brian, did, Brian, apparently, your item is gonna be on our work session. We'll, we'll, we'll get to that right after the meeting here, okay?
Got it.
And you'll have an opportunity at that point to, to give us your input. Okay, anybody else? If not?
Councilmember Waller.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, say thank you to all of those law enforcement individuals, county, city firefighters out there the last week that have been working a lot of overtime to help out our city, other cities, um, in this time of need, um, with all of the unrest that's going on throughout the state and the nation, but I just wanted people to remember that these law enforcement officers and firefighters and are all giving up time away from their families to help make sure that the public is still safe and they're doing their job, um, the best of their abilities to keep us all, um, safe in our communities, and I just wanted someone, you know, just to say thank you to all of those men and women out there.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Councilmember King.
I just echo councilperson Waller's comments that have no further.
Councilmember Hushusta.
Yeah, I, I agree with, with Rebecca that, you know, you guys have just really gone above and beyond, and I was so impressed yesterday by the, just how everything went with the protest and, um, how peaceful it was and how organized it was, even though it wasn't organized or planned organization, but it, it just was so smooth, and I saw officers kneeling as people walked by. It was just, it was a class act, and so I thank you for that.
Councilmember Fisher.
I would just like to echo Rebecca's comments, um, to the spot on.
Councilmember Baskin.
Yeah, two things. First is absolutely echo, um, Becky's, Rebecca's comments. Um, you know, I think where APD deserves a lot of credit is that they have spent years, and the chief has been a great leader in that building trust and building relationships with a lot of communities, and so, you know, the work that they do showed last week, but it didn't just start last week, and they deserve to be commended for that. Um, and also want to say a thank you to the city staff, specifically Ann and Craig and Craig, um, and Tom and a number of other people for the flexibility and the work that you've done, um, with the chamber and the, and with the businesses. Obviously, you know, with everything going on, um, to be able to pretty quickly pivot and figure out what we needed to do to support our local businesses is really powerful and I think shows a great flexibility for the city and I know is much appreciated by the residents. So thank you guys for all the extra time and energy you've put in for that.
Councilmember Helly.
So I'm gonna, um, somewhat echo everyone else's comments, um, and say that this is a week where I was very proud to be associated with the city of Austin. You know, when the chips are down is when you really see what people are made of, and not only were we dealing with COVID, um, restrictions, people being, uh, sick and, um, more and more illness in Mauer County, but we were also dealing with, um, these protests, um, watching things go terribly wrong in the metro area and hoping it wasn't gonna happen here, and I've just never been more proud of both our citizens who were extremely respectful and, um, exercised their right, uh, to protest, and also our city staff, including law enforcement, but, um, really all city staff. It's been a heck of a month, and I just couldn't be more proud. Um, I also want to say congratulations to the class of two thousand twenty. Um, won't be a traditional year, but boy, we won't forget it, and I know there's lots of families, uh, out there celebrating your achievements and add the city to that list. And then, um, finally, last, uh, meeting, we set a budget subcommittee on the council to work on the two thousand twenty-one budget, and, um, we'll be meeting next week, uh, to, to sort of officially kick things off, but I wanted to share some of the parameters that I'm going to be working on, um, in that, as part of that committee. Um, what we're hoping to do is create a list of options for the council to choose from. I don't think it's the role of the subcommittee to necessarily, um, pick something in or out, but we're gonna explore the options and bring them back. Um, this list is gonna be used for both the two thousand twenty-one levy and if we get LGA cuts. Um, so we're gonna have to keep all this information in our back pocket, waiting to see what happens with LGA. Um, our first phase is data gathering, and so especially to the staff of the city, I want to say, uh, don't panic, don't get defensive. We want to gather the data, and if it turns out that an idea that a resident or a council member had for savings doesn't save very much money, then we, it's probably gonna die right there. So we, we first need to gather data and sort of suspend our judgment about whether or not it's a great idea, whether or not it's gonna save a lot of money. We want to gather some data first. Um, we're gonna put a priority on large-scale savings. Um, we don't think we're gonna get to a great levy going pencil by pencil. Um, and then also on sustainable items. Uh, we're very wary of balancing our budget with one-time savings or by cutting something that you really can't live without for five years, such as your, uh, development and training budget. And then finally, um, I think it is gonna be painful. I personally don't think that we've got fat in the budget to cut. I think we're gonna be cutting muscle and bone, and they're gonna be hard decisions, um, but we're gonna do the best we can to make them the least painful. So I just wanted to share that. I know it's on people's minds, and that's the direction that the, the subcommittee is gonna go.
Councilmember Large Austin.
Well, really, in this case, kinda sucks going last because everything's pretty much been covered. Um, but yeah, to echo, um, I guess just to add a little bit, um, appreciate, um, our police force and, uh, fire department. A special thank you to the chief for, he does an excellent job of keeping us updated, uh, not only on what's going on with COVID, but with the situation with the protests this weekend. He kept us very, uh, involved and up to date, and I appreciate that. Also to echo thanking Ann, Casel, and Craig, and Craig, and the chief, uh, for following our lead and trying to be as flexible as we can to help all these businesses that want to open up, because there isn't a one-size-fits-all. I know there was a lot of, uh, banter going back and forth on some Facebook pages, um, and it just, one thing doesn't fit for everybody, I think, and they've done a, a great job of being flexible and working with the businesses that do want to do something, and, uh, I think that was the sentiment of council and appreciate them doing that. And, uh, I guess that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Craig, do you have anything?
Yeah, uh, Representative Poppy is, kinda is part of the bonding process, um, reached out to us as they still formulate that for the special session about our willingness and what our dollar amount we, I would like to see for our wastewater treatment facility. Um, suggested we still would like to see the nineteen million and, and, uh, but that would be open for phasing of the project, so, um, that's part of the normal bonding process, and we'll see where that comes in. And then our budget meeting is Wednesday, this Wednesday at one. So, I'll look forward to that.
Reports?
Uh, not that I know of.
Okay.
Looks like Chief McKeegan's got one.
Gave it.
Not a report, but I just want to say how much I appreciate, uh, everything that was said. Uh, Austin's been a great place to, to work and be in law enforcement. Uh, the mayor's always been an incredible supporter, as has the council, uh, as has Mr. Clark, and like I said, it makes, uh, you know, coming to work even in a stressful time, uh, a lot easier, uh, when you do have that support. Uh, the other, uh, city staff, fire department, uh, we do have an excellent working relationship and are able to communicate, um, with each other quite well, uh, bounce ideas around, and like I said, uh, those are things that have really built up, uh, over time that even in some stressful situations will, you know, give you some flexibility and ability to process through it. But again, I appreciate hearing the, the things you had to say about our police and, uh, firefighters, uh, and deputies. They really all do an outstanding job. They are great people, uh, doing the best that they can, um, in the, the current environment and, and within their careers, and it's a bit of a whirlwind, um, weekend with it springing up so quickly, both throughout the state and locally. And then, like I said, today, eight o'clock in the morning, we're back doing COVID issues, thinking about the people who aren't working right now, thinking about the people that really have a lot of stress in their lives, and getting back and seeing what we can do to try to hu- help those folks out, so, thank you again.
Me? All right. Well, I think we were all really shocked when we saw the video of what happened up in the cities last Monday. We could go today, and I, I, you know, the first thing, after the shock wears off, the first thing that came to my mind, these are issues of, of culture on departments. You know, what is the culture? What's accepted on your department? And I knew this type of thing isn't accepted on our department. It's also, uh, about leadership, and I think both our police and fire department, I, I can't recall having better leaders, and we've had some good ones on the police department in the past, in the recent, since I've been here, but, uh, Chief McCoy had people ready to go up to the cities and, and, uh, I mean, they were, they were right there also and, uh, had it, if it went a step further, we'd have had officers, or firefighters up there putting out fires. The police department did an excellent job on, on Sunday, and you know, we're just really fortunate that we have, uh, we have the two chiefs we have sitting here, and I want to thank them both for the way they comported themselves over the weekend, and that's about it for me. I mean, it's just a really stressful time for society, and that's one less thing we have to worry about, so.